People in the audience, this is wonderful. Welcome, welcome. So with that, we'll move along in our agenda and I would like to call on Dr. Banks please to do our invitation.
Goodness, pray. Dear Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together this afternoon. Thank you for your Son Jesus Christ and Holy Spirit, our Conference and Keeper. I pray, Father God, for everything that we have attempted to do within this work session. I pray that it will be done decently and in order. I pray, Father God, that we continue to work together and that we reduce any evilness that has promulgated from this situation or any other situation. We're going to disapprove of Satan's plan and we want God's plans to be activated in our hearts and in our minds. And I pray tonight, Father God, for our children, our students that we're trying to teach day in and day out. I pray, Father God, you give them the desire to do the right things. And I pray that we will continue to lead them in a feasible manner. And I pray, Father God, that when this meeting is over, that the conclusion will be that we have done the best that we can do for our children and for ourselves. And I pray that you bless our leader, our superintendent, our board members, all certified and classified staff, also our cleaning staff with Beck, everyone that's affiliated with Coffee County School System. We ask you, Father God, to take care of all of us, faith-based and school-based, everybody here today, Father God. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Dr. Banks. All right. Board members, you've all had an opportunity to take a look at the agenda and for your review. Anybody has any questions or would like to make a motion to accept, please?
Would we accept the agenda as presented? Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. At this time, we will move forward with the agenda items, like welcome everybody here. We've got a number of visitors, so welcome. And we're going to proceed with the minutes from the previous month's meeting. Our board members, you've been sent the minutes prior to this meeting and had a chance to review them. I'll give you a minute to look over them. If there's any questions or comments, let us know. All right, if it meets the consensus of the board, we'll place this on the consent agenda for the regular meeting at 7:30. Financial report. We have the monthly financial report, July 1 through September 30. See that we end the month with $13,520,154.49. Does she own or any comments about this sheet?
It can be noted that the expenditures for September is the first month of this fiscal year that includes all employees, 10, 11, and 12-month employees, because the past June and August were approved salaries that went against the previous year. So this is the first month reflected all employees.
The second document that we have, if there's no questions, is the comparison report. This gives us a view of the past three years in the month fund equity. FY '20 going back to FY '17. Board members, any questions or concerns about this sheet? Document number three is our monthly financial detail report. Does she all need anything to point out on that sheet?
No, sir. It's in line with where we have been in the past in September.
Yeah, we spent some time going over it yesterday and again this morning just to see, make sure we're tracking where we've been. We're close to where we've been this time last year and previous years. And then the last sheet is the East Frost. You'll see collections were up again this month. That's a good thing. All you have to do is drive around Douglas and Cog County to see people are out shopping and spending. If there's no questions about the financials, we'll place those on the consent agenda for approval at the monthly meeting. Our next item on the agenda is the CHAMP campaign. And in talking with our leadership team here last week, it became clear that we thought it would be a great thing for our board to hear from April Thomason and the rest of the CHAMP campaign group, just to update our board members. I know you know what they've been doing, but this gives us an opportunity through the video board meeting and the public that's here tonight to hear more about what's been going on, because I really think it's a very positive initiative that is impacting the lives of our young people and just wanted to give y'all a chance to share it tonight. So April, if you want to come forward and introduce our visitors and y'all just tell everybody about what you've been doing, because it's really fantastic work.
Okay. Well, we're excited to be here and share the good work that we've been doing. We have several of our committee members here tonight. Had a lot of conflicts. Our committee has grown to about 70 at this point. This is over just a couple of months. We have several here. If you're on the CHAMP committee, if you would, please stand. We have churches, school system representatives, Department of Juvenile Justice, Public Health, and many more. But to start us off, I'm going to introduce Pastor Bob Powell from the Sanctuary. He's going to give you a little insight.
The CHAMP campaign was actually started last spring in an effort Dr. Lee saw a need in our community. And the need was, there was, you know, a lot of our children were beginning to face, you know, suicide, which is a serious issue in our community and affects so many different people. And at that time, he decided that he would reach out to the faith-based community. And so we had a community meeting and began to talk about what we could do to get everybody together to help turn this tide back. And at that time, we came up with the idea that we would institute a campaign that we felt like was a campaign that would have an impact on our community and hopefully get that message out before. A lot of times when issues come, you know, it's easy to be reactive, but I think what Dr. Lee saw was that we wanted to be more proactive. And I appreciate that he wanted to do that for our community. At that time, we instituted the CHAMP campaign and the Know Your Worth. Those two things came together at a meeting. And what is the CHAMP campaign? Well, the CHAMP is an acronym for a strategy that we believe that would help kids if they ever had that moment in their life that they were going through a difficult time and wanted to know, maybe what do I do or how do I reach out? And so we actually had an opportunity to talk to a clinical psychologist and he helped to talk about what this CHAMP stands for. So I'm going to go over through it very quickly because those five letters are very important when you may face somebody going through a crisis like this. So the C stands for courage. And we wanted to teach our kids that they need to have courage when they go through those times. And the H stands for help. In other words, it's important that when a child is going through that situation, if we can teach them that it's okay to reach out for help, that it's don't be ashamed, don't feel like you've got to hide, but we want you to reach out for help. The A is for adaptability. A lot of times, the psychologist told me, when people get very rigid in their thinking without understanding change and how it affects them, that we teach that we've got to be more adaptable to things going on. And so the A is for adaptability. The M is for motivation. We want to keep our students and our young kids motivated. And the P is for persistence. So those five things constitute a strategy if any young person's ever going through that. So how do we implement that program? So last spring, we did a series of videos and Josh is going to come up in a little bit and talk about our social media. That's just the way kids talk and operate. And so we had a campaign for every day, we had somebody to speak on these subjects, a personal testimony. If you've never seen these videos, they're very touching. If you ever find somebody going through this situation, I promise you, if they'll watch these videos, it will help to encourage them to not continue forward in that mindset. And so we started that in the spring. We showed those videos every day. And that was really the birthplace of the CHAMP Know Your Worth. And then they designed these great T-shirts. It's hard to go out anywhere in Douglas and not find somebody wearing these T-shirts. That shows us that it's working. We want people to understand that their work is amazing. And so Josh and some others designed the Know Your Worth and it's very popular. I think up to date, he may talk about this 3,000. Is that probably close?
More, yeah, 3,000 or more.
Probably 3,000 to 4,000 of these shirts have been sold right here in Douglas. So now they're reaching throughout the United States, Texas, Arkansas, just all over. And so now this is something that's not, it started in Douglas, but now it's spreading because this is something that is affecting a lot of different communities. And so we did the campaign that week. During the summer, we started doing more activities. But our hope is, you know, I'm always cautious to say this because, you know, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but I believe because of the effort that Dr. Lee's and Ms. April and all the counselors and teachers, because of what they have done, that I believe that this tide is turning back. And this is one of those issues.
Let me stop you there. You have played a big part.
Well, all of us.
Y'all need our faith leaders. Faith leaders, y'all need to make sure that y'all have done this. So thank you.
Well, I just, you know, one of our mottos is one more child is one to me. And our hope is that we never have to see another person go through the tragedy of what suicide brings. It's one of those situations in life. I watched a documentary on ESPN over the weekend about a buried quarterback for Washington State and how his mom and dad are still dealing with this issue. And our hope is that Douglas is still a small community and everybody's touched when this happens. So for all of us, that's where the CHAMP campaign, Know Your Worth, the football, we had a football Friday night where we encouraged the cheerleaders. Man, they had these T-shirts on. The people in the stands have these T-shirts. So hopefully that if a child ever gets to that place in their life, they know that their community, their teachers, their leadership, their pastors, that they're somewhere that they can reach out and that would never be the ending issue of their life. So that's kind of how the CHAMP campaign got birthed. And I'll turn it over to Ms. A.
Well, I get to talk to you about all the fun stuff we've done, all the events and the activities. And we have, looking back when I started making this list today, I was like, wow, we have been really busy. The flipper clicker, do you have it? First, I want to show you a video. Do you have that? As he was talking about, we did several videos and it was people within our community who have experienced suicide in one fashion or another. This is just a five-second blurb. I'm going to show you Ms. Becky Temple. She shared her story.
My name is Becky Temple. Suicide is a law. Your life is worth living.
And that's just the basic idea of all of them. Her video was on the day of help and she encouraged students to seek help if they were dealing with any of these issues to please, you know, seek help. That's where all the videos were going with that. Some pictures I wanted to share with you. We're kind of proud of the things that have happened. The first thing that really kind of blew up was the T-shirts, as he said. We have maroon for Cog County students. CCA asked if they could do shirts in blue for their school colors. And Atkinson County is red. They have red T-shirts. And as he said, it's kind of blown up. It's going into other states. There you can see the CCA shirts. This was First Friday. After the First Friday that we have downtown, we set up just a fun area around the gazebo downtown and different churches and agencies had booths and activities. You can see the popcorn machine. I see an Atkinson County shirt in there. Just something for the students to do. This is very student-driven. We have a group of student ambassadors at the high school that help drive these activities. They tell us what they want. They even tell us where they want to have it sometimes. So that's where all of our activities come from. This is Daniel Ritchie. This is a speaker that several of the churches pulled their money and brought him in. We had a youth rally downtown one Sunday evening. Had lots of students from different churches and different students from different communities. In July, we sponsored Christmas in July at Jordan Stadium. That's one thing the students said that they wanted. They wanted to have something at the stadium. Covenant came and set up a big movie screen and we watched the movie The Elf. They brought blankets. They brought lawn chairs. And it was very hot. It was definitely Christmas in July. I don't know what we were thinking. At a football game, as Pastor Bob mentioned, the cheerleaders wore their shirts and they were very supportive. They, the banner that the team runs through, they did the banner for us. We sold T-shirts at the game that night. We handed out bracelets and talked to students as they were coming through the doors about knowing their worth. We had a photo opportunity and I don't know what it is about a photo opportunity, but people like to have the picture taken. The JV squad did some face painting. This was Fields of Faith. Tommy Watkins is on our committee and he, the theme for Fields of Faith this year was Know Your Worth. Chris Sheffield was the speaker and his message was about Know Your Worth. And Tommy shared with us that a lot of the counties in his region have gone with the Know Your Worth thing this year. It's really catching on. Some of the other things that I didn't have pictures to share, we had speakers in the schools at the middle school and high school level. We brought in Reggie Dabs and Dean Sykes. They were here in September, I think. The churches sponsored that and several students in attendance for that. And we just want to serve as a resource for our students. We're encouraging students to seek help if they're dealing with anything like this. At all of our activities, we try to have counselors, social workers, anybody on hand in case there is somebody that needs to talk. And I'm going to let Josh come and talk to you about social media side.
So one of the things that we wanted to do when we started this campaign was have it be more than just here. And we kind of wanted to piggyback off of successful campaigns that we've seen in the past that were similar to this. I mean, you remember way back in the day, the WJJD bracelets? There was a campaign against self-harm several years back called To Write Love on Her Arms. We wanted to take those kinds of ideas and kind of harness that to make this be more than just kind of a one-off thing. And so once we come up with the name of Know Your Worth, we set off to start kind of a social media movement around that. We're still building that. We're still kind of planning where that goes from here. The shirts were part of it. You saw the pictures that were tagged. We got on Instagram pretty quick and started the hashtag KnowYourWorthCC and CHAMPCC. CC for Coffee County. And asked everybody that took pictures at any events, anybody that bought a shirt and wanted to show it off and posted with it, we just encouraged them to tag that way. We just know that's a lot of the way information gets out there is people following those sorts of things. And so as we started working with students and getting them on Instagram and getting them to share, a lot of these events that you've seen, we actually just posted about on social media and then all of a sudden, students will start telling other students and now we've got people showing up that didn't know about it 10 minutes before that. And so that's just a little idea into what we think social media can do for a movement like this. I actually got a call just a week ago from a pastor in Americas who wants us to come and start CHAMP and Know Your Worth in Americas because they recently had a college student over there that committed suicide. And because of social media and the T-shirts that we've made and the things that they've seen us posting, they want us to come over there and get it set up over there. So I really do think that social media for us is going to be what makes this more than just a Coffee County thing. I think it's great that what we've done here, but I think we're sitting on something that could be a huge movement and social media is going to be the way to make that happen. As we move into the next year, one of the things that we've talked about is just like we have Know Your Worth ambassadors, student ambassadors in the school now that have helped us get the word out. We want to start kind of using social media campaign ideas like having students that are influencers, that maybe we get shirts in their hands and get them to post. We've had local photographers offer their services up to us so that we can maybe use some of that professional quality material to get the word out there even better. So those are some of the things we're thinking about for the next year. If you haven't, if you're on Instagram, follow @KnowYourWorthCC. And if you wear this shirt, if you own one, if you don't get one, but if you do own one and you post in it ever, hashtag Know Your WorthCC and hashtag CHAMPCC, because that really does, people see that and it helps us get the word out. And just to add on to that, not only did students grab that really fast, but local businesses grabbed that really fast. It was really exciting for us to see on the social media end when local banks are grabbing a hold of this, local stores, doctors' offices. It was crazy to see that. And that's all through the social media campaign that Know Your Worth was. So that's what we've been doing.
I'm going to wrap it up with this. The challenge now is that a lot of times when you start a campaign is to continue that fire that you had from the beginning. Right now, we have had some great success, but we want to continue that. We don't want it just something that dies down. And that starts with all of us, continuing to push the message out and to be helpful in the situations that we got. One thing that we want to do, we did a big football game. I think going forward, I would like to do a basketball game, a Know Your Worth basketball game where we get the message out. Maybe a baseball game. The more we can present this in front of students, I believe that is the way that we can attack this head-on. So I hope going forward, we're going to do that. We've got some bracelets if you'd like to have a Know Your Worth bracelet, but we appreciate everybody's support. And if you know somebody that we can help, just let us know. So thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Just so we can have it publicized, if somebody does want a shirt, where do they go locally to get one?
Ultimate Graphics.
Ultimate Graphics.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you for your efforts.
And, you know, we do have some other organizations represented here tonight. We've got Ms. Dockery from the Department of Juvenile Justice. Thank you for being here and our special services folks back there that work with our counselors. Thank y'all as well as our faith community leaders. So appreciate you all being here. And, you know, it's kind of, it's really just by love and teaching our young people and everybody to love each other and communicate and work together towards making sure everybody's okay. So thank y'all for being here and just wanted to bring that to the board and just continue to build support for working with our young people and making sure they're okay. All right. Financial report, CHAMP campaign. And the next item on our agenda is the Crisis Alert System. So we've got a representative here from a crisis alert system company, Synthegix. And we're going to have Mr. Brent Coleman present Synthegix System to the board. It's information. This is information for the board tonight. On a personal note, that's awesome. And Dr. Banks, I appreciate the very part.
Thank you. Let me see how to use this one. There we go. Once upon a time, we didn't have to think about this in our schools, right? I mean, I grew up in Georgia. I went to public school my whole life, but our kids, this generation, they had to do active shooter drills, lockdown drills. I was in Douglasville on Friday. They're implementing Synthegix in the rate school districts from all over the South there. And they did a real drill and high school kids were climbing under desks. And it's not just media hype when you think about school shootings. You can go to this website. And so since 2011, school shootings on school campuses, they've increased by 650%. Most of them you don't hear on the media. Obviously, something as horrific as Parkland last year, Santa Fe, Texas, Sandy Hook, that's all over the media for obvious reasons. But if you go there, you would see that, and this was on the media last week in Oregon, you may have seen there was a teacher, he's a former football player from University of Oregon, saw a student with a gun, was able to grab it and they were hugging on the video. But in Virginia last week, there was a shooting in a parking lot after school. Athens, South Carolina, just across from Augusta, a couple of weeks ago, there was a shooting in a school parking lot. So as you, as a school board, as a school district, should you spend precious dollars worried about school shootings? Because even though they're increasing, statistically, you're not going to have a school shooting in Coffee County this year while y'all are board members. So do you spend money on it? Well, you've got to have a plan. You've got to think about the what-if. And this product can help you with that tremendously. But for me, the return on investment are these things, because you're going to have kids injured, you're going to have some medical emergencies where life could be at stake. You're going to have fights, you're going to have kids that threaten teachers, you're going to have the non-custodial parent show up in the classroom. And the great thing about this product is you're not spending money on a school shooting only. You're spending money on something that can be used for all of these type emergencies. Keep hitting the wrong button here. And in all those cases, it's about time. And that's our motto, every second matters. And the reality is if we can put a crisis alert badge on every staff member, there really cannot be a faster way to send an emergency than something that I have on me, right? And really, it covers all the what-ifs of what kind of emergencies you could have because you're wearing it with you. So the core of this is yes, every staff member will wear a badge. And I'm talking about teachers, the media specialists, the custodial staff, the lunchroom ladies, everybody has one of these badges. Number two, we're going to protect your entire campus. We have our own mesh network. So if you're on the footprint of your campus and you try to use this badge, it's going to work. If I'm somewhat familiar with Coffee High School, if I go over there, you know, it's a big place, right? It's not just talking about the building itself. I mean, you've got parking lots, you've got a football stadium, you've got a baseball stadium. And so we want to protect the entire footprint of that. We're going to have mapping technology so that when I press the badge and I have an emergency, the right people are going to automatically be notified via mobile app, also via desktop software. So the people that need to know get a noxious sound on their phone, they pick it up, there's a map of the school, map of the campus, the flashing red light of where the person is that pressed the button. We're also going to take your protocols. You're a very good school district, good leader over there. I'm Dr. Lee's and I'll just say that because he truly has been hunting for a lot of years. We're going to take your protocols and put it in the system, right? Because as I travel around the South, some people may call it lockout or lock-in or soft lockdown or fleef. I've got a district working with them. When they have an emergency, everybody leaves the building because it's so open. So we're going to take whatever you have and place and put it into our system. I'll play a little video here. It's about 60 seconds. Is some of the media coverage on Synthegix? Is something happening? No, it's coming up. There we go.
Future of emergency response has arrived and it just takes the click of a button.
Yeah, great. To keep students safer in school shootings and another crisis situation.
They would know exactly what building, what hallway, what classroom, as well as the teacher or the staff member who did make that emergency call.
Teachers will press a button on the badge to send an alert that there's a problem. If it's a campus-wide alert, lights linked to the system will begin to flash across campus.
Responding to an emergency situation quicker than ever before is possible now through this badge.
A great deal of assurances to our parents, to our students, to our employees, and to me personally as superintendent in our board.
It empowers the teachers to be in control of the safety of their room. They can summon a principal at the principal button. We know where and we know who. That is powerful technology.
A lot of that media coverage was from Tampa. Hillsborough County is the sixth largest district in the country and they're rolling it out in close to 300 sites right now. I want to talk more about the badge itself. When the developer came up with the idea and started developing the technology, initially he wanted to have five or six or seven buttons on it for all the different types of common emergencies and press this for a fight, this for a weapon, this for drug overdoses. And first responders said, no, there's a reason you call 911. You don't call 911 for this, 912, 913. So we try to simplify it and we have two alerts. So we try to simplify it, and we have two alerts. The first one is what we call staff alert, and the second one is the campus-wide, we've got a major emergency that could be a threat to everybody in the building. More specific to that, let's talk about the staff alert. In that, you press it three times. The person that's wearing it, they get a vibration to let them know that I successfully have sent an alert. And then the people you designate should receive the alert, have a notification that pops up on their phone, it's an amber sound alert to make them pick up the phone because you all are getting emails and texts probably right now, and you may glance at it every once in a while. So we need to get their attention. It's not your best friend's birthday on Facebook popping up. We need leaders to pick up that phone. And there would be a map of the school. So again, Coffee High School, if the teacher teaching geometry in room 202 had a student that just fell over out of the chair, she presses that three times, the people that need to know are automatically notified. And I'll give you some, a couple of real examples. At Summerdale this year, we had a panel of some of the early adopters, and Muskogee County superintendent was on that panel, Muskogee County being Columbus. He had been in Florida for the first part of his career, and he shared the story of how he had a teacher have a heart attack and she passed away during the school day. And they said the reason she passed away is because they didn't get there fast enough. And emergency personnel, there was confusion about where she was, they actually went to the wrong school. And she said, and he said, when we made the decision to move forward, I called that family. And I said, I didn't forget about it. And had we had this technology, she'd still be living today. Something a little less serious, my wife's a teacher, teaches third grade, and just last year, she had three injuries at recess, two broken arms, and a concussion. All minor in the grand scheme of things, but she talks about how long it takes to get help. And when you've got a kid injured, you don't, you think it's minor, but you really don't know, especially the one that had the head injury. And you're in that dilemma as a teacher, you go, I leave my class that I'm supposed to be watching, go try to find help. So how much easier would it be to just hit this button three times? All right, now that second alert is a more serious one. And the way it works, you keep pressing it. In reality, it's eight times. In training the staff, we tell them to keep pressing it until these alert strokes start flashing. And we put one in every classroom, we put them in hallways, common areas, cafeteria, we put them outside. So if you go to your high school, we'd have them at the football stadium. We have them on light poles and power poles and that kind of thing to give that visual alert that we have something very serious going on in campus right now. You have dual enrollment students, you have people just visiting your campus, they're going to see a flashing red light in the parking lot. The next thing we're going to do is automatically send a message to your intercom system. And we're going to tell everybody what to do during what we consider to be a lockdown in those cases.
This is a lockdown alert. Immediately lock your doors, turn off the lights, stay out of sight.
We're going to then have a message pop up on all the computers on your network. You all determine which computers it can include students if you so choose, it's going to tell them what to do during lockdown. You may have students taking a test, they have earbuds in, they're focused, they may not hear the message, they may not see the flashing light, but they're going to have the message pop up on the computer screen. We're going to have that same message on the mobile app, this time, you're going to include district personnel. Dr. Lee doesn't need to know that there may be an injury at recess at one of your elementary schools, but if one goes into lockdown, he needs to know. Dr. Banks needs to know. And so you can be on the front end of response. You certainly can bring in local authorities and make them a part of this process so they're notified at the same time, you know, via the mobile app, via the desktop software. And again, it's about time. And so if, God forbid, I see a kid with a weapon, I press this eight times, all this should happen in about five seconds. And then we can respond, hopefully shorten the event. You also can send out alerts. This is not the only way to send an alert. So again, more for district leadership, if you have situations where you need to quickly communicate an emergency to multiple campuses, your entire campus, you know, there's bad weather that popped up, tornado cell, severe thunderstorm, buses are about to release, and it's tracking all your schools, you could put all of them in a weather alert. These can flash different colors, so on the weather, it might be blue. And in a couple of seconds, you have every school being communicated to that we have a situation. We've had several real situations that there's been a violent crime near a school, you've got some gunmen on the loose in the community, you can go into the app and put all schools or select schools in maybe a soft lockdown. These could flash yellow, you're communicating over the intercom, but you know, instruction would continue, but we have a serious situation. Those are just some examples. Parkland, when I was here in the same room a month or two ago, we went into great detail about what happened in Parkland and how a product like this could have made the situation much less serious and maybe even prevented it. I won't share all that, I will share this is, there was a campus monitor that saw the gunman get off an Uber with a rifle bag. When he was a student there, they searched his bag daily for weapons. So you've got someone seeing that person get off an Uber with a rifle bag, and it was one minute, one minute and 40 seconds before the first shot was fired. So I think part of that is the philosophy of we're in this together, if you see something active and had, I would like to think if something like that happened in one of our districts, they're pressing this button, there's strobes flashing, there's an intercom message, maybe there was no one shot. And I don't want to say, there's no way to guarantee that, but you can see the time and how important that would be. On that panel was the chief of safety in Hillsborough, which is Tampa. And he's going to talk about what it means to empower people to do something. He calls it the force multiplier. I know we got some law enforcement here and they probably great familiar with that term.
We partnered with Synthegix about 10 or 11 months ago. I spoke to Superintendent Athens and Superintendent Parkus. And our next iteration of what we want to do for security was to be able to give each and every one of our employees the ability to call for help anytime, anywhere when they're on one of our campuses. For a 30 semi-year law enforcement professional, we call that a force multiplier. In fact, we're putting that technology in the hands of over 25,000 employees, gives me 25,000 active eyes on our campus and helps to keep campus safe.
I'm trying to keep this brief for you all because I know you have a busy agenda. So I'll wrap it up with this quote from Superintendent Jefferson-City, and I've shared with some others before. You can read it for yourself, but Dr. Jackson is entering year 48 in education, and his point is if I know there's something that can help make my staff safer and be able to send something as quick as possible, something I have to implement in my school district. I don't know if you all have been involved with GSBA for years, Mr. Hopkins has been the president of that organization, he's on that school board, I think for about 48 years today. So thank you all for your time, it's great to be here. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Lee.
Thank you, Brent. We wanted to give the board a demonstration, a presentation on this type of alert system. We've previously presented to the principals, they saw the demonstration and had the same meeting in this room with the principals to see this particular product. We wanted to present it to the board tonight just for information, we're not asking for any action, but we wanted to just bring everybody along with the idea of an alert system that might help us have safer schools. And so, do y'all have any questions? We... Yeah, coughs, I knew that was what you were...
We all did that's what you...
We've been working with the principals to establish budgets for school safety. We've been working, we had been working with the principals going back 12, 16 months on lists of items in their buildings to create safer schools. Camera systems, locking mechanisms on doors, the identification systems when they come into the buildings, fences, those kind of fortifications for the schools. We had been working with the principals on that, and we're going to continue to work on those things to kind of harden our facilities and make sure they're as safe as possible. And we were planning to use ESPLS funding for those type of projects and such. And unbeknownst to us, as we were working on those type of initiatives to save, make our schools safer, the governor released the $30,000 per school to help have safer schools. And we're very thankful to the governor's office and the state legislature for releasing that funding for each school. So we have $30,000 available for each school to, for them, and the idea with that is for them to have autonomy. The governor's office requested that the schools have the autonomy to spend that money the way they want to spend it to make their schools safer. So we really want to respect the spirit of that whole process with using those funds for school safety at the school level. So we have a combination of initiatives we're working on. One, the original list of hardening our schools using our local tax dollars that we told the taxpayers when we approved on the ballot that we would, we would create safer schools using ESPLS. And then we also have now this additional $30,000 that was earmarked from the governor's office for school safety. So our plan was to use the $30,000 if the principals wanted to on this type of improvement on our schools. And so the principals saw this, this type of alert system, and for the most part, they wanted to move forward with this type of alert system. So the idea would be to use the $30,000 for each school that we have, and then possibly ESPLS funding if as needed for whatever other improvements we want to make. So I don't know if that answers your question. And I'll... So... Well, here's where we were at with the numbers, hard numbers, Mr. Galloway. We, this purchase will be more than $100,000, all right? Therefore, we feel like we have to put this out on the state procurement site to, it's a $100,000 purchase or more. So our plan is to run an RFP, and we wanted to present it to you first, but an RFP for a crisis alert system because there are other products, just to be transparent. So we, our plan is to put an RFP out after this meeting sometime over the next week or two, and then we will take proposals from crisis alert systems, and then we're going to come back to you with a number for a purchase, and that's our plan. Is there a yearly maintenance fee on this or anything? Yes, there is a, there is an annual fee for the product and... Will that be in the bid? That will, yeah. We're going to, we're going to have, come back to you with more detail, that type of detail. What we using that? Don't we have some kind of... We do. Currently, we have an app on our phones, and we purchased this after the Parkland incident about a year and a half ago, and it does serve as an alert, but we just feel like we would like to have something better to ensure our schools are safe. We would discontinue this. We would discontinue this, yes, sir.
We can, we're not in a contract.
And we can, it's an annual, annual subscription, so. Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on this?
I really, really like this type system. The system we currently have, I don't like, we've had several false alarms with it. A lot of our teachers are skeptical about putting stuff on their personal cell phones. This gives everybody something around their neck that they can lock the school down if they see anything. I'm not saying let's go to Synthegix, I'm not saying either way, you know, we have a process to do that, but this system, I like.
If I can make a couple of comments to that. Number one is the number of sites we have in Georgia, we're working with over 40 districts right now in Georgia. There are other products under that crisis alert tag, but I don't know of them having a working site. I can't guarantee they don't, but I haven't heard of one. So that's something to think about. Make your decision.
You mentioned having alert the lights at different points on campus. Is this something that, I guess, based on how the network is set up, for example, could this be something that would be used within our stadiums, for example? Maybe not on an ongoing basis, but when an event is there, is the system expandable like to a certain...
Well, we would set it up, you don't adjust the system, these have a location, so really the way it works, it's Bluetooth, RF, communicating from the badge and finding the closest probe, and that's where it says, okay, I'm in room 102. So we put them on your football stadium, so if someone's at PE and, you know, they're using the track as an example, and have each probe, they can press this and load, and I'm in the track. So yeah, we would put it in your football stadium, but it's not typically something you move around, we're basically temporary.
I was going to keep the accidental lockdown report from how they were three clicks that sounds like, but you'd be surprised at how...
We haven't seen that. I mean, that is a very legitimate question. I'm never going to say you would never have a false alarm, because you probably will. But that's one, there's been a lot, there's a lot of technology in this, and that's why it's three for staff alert, that's why it's eight for lockdown, to try to make sure we don't have false alarms.
It's intentional, there's an intent to...
Is that an actual badge right there?
It is.
You won't let them depress it to say, just to...
Enough giving idea.
Sprinklers.
Sprinklers.
Dr. Lee, if you don't mind.
Yeah, Chris had it.
Hey, another thing that we have just gotten through, me and Dr. Banks just went to every school and did a lockdown drill just to practice and get our teachers and staff and students in the, just in the routine of this is what you do, this is how you do it. And at least two of our lockdowns, possibly three, we've had IT people walk in, you know, they have master keys, they need to go to work, so they walk in on our lockdown. The flashing lights work, would work perfect for that. You know, we've had some issues. You've got to physically match that thing there, it's not, it wouldn't be a matter of just it falling against your stomach.
Yeah, when you hit that third one, you know it, it zaps you pretty good to say stop.
And it just, there's a lot of advantages to that. And to be honest with you, we've had, we've had a couple, couple of instances that I needed to lock a school down. This particular product has the capabilities of me going to the app, go school specific, and lock that school down from my phone wherever I am. So if I get a phone call and said, hey, we got a shooting in the area of Indian Creek, I can go to Indian Creek, hit that, hit lockdown, and it's locked down without me having to call, trying to get principal, assistant principal, or trying to get somebody on the phone and tell them to lock it down. So there's a lot of advantages to this, to what we currently have.
If I could make a comment, and it sounds kind of flippant, but it's true, as far as an app, when my wife teaches, her phone's in her purse, you know, I mean, and so there is a lot of pushback of you asking me to do something on my personal phone, but it's just, where is my phone? And then in a lot of schools, you don't have a signal. And one thing I failed to mention in the product is we're this close to having automatic radio integration as well. And so when the button's pressed, anybody carrying a radio would give an automatic message over their radio. And that's a very important add-on that I failed to mention.
There's no other questions? We wanted to have this presentation just to kind of bring everybody along together with something we are looking at, so.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Thanks, sir.
Take care. All right, at this time, we have on the agenda bus camera system, and we have been looking at improving our bus cameras for probably a couple of years. And once the voters approved the ESPLS, last year, we realized we would have some funding available to improve our bus camera system. So Mr. Gillyard has been shopping and looking and trying to decide what camera system would serve us best, and so Mr. Gillyard here tonight to present a bus camera system that we're going to recommend that we go with.
Thank you for your time. We are trying to improve our bus system. You know, during some, we did get new radios on the school buses, it was made a little safer. Now we want to take it extra step and put new cameras on our buses. See, layout of the school buses changed over the years, they're now high back seats. With Jesse drove years ago, they were short seats, all the kindergarten day, they can't do that, so we need to upgrade our system. We have Mr. Ron Deming with REI cameras here. Mr. Ron, you want to come, he's going to do a little demonstration for the REI cameras. He's going to do a little demonstration for the REI cameras.
Thank you. I wish I could show you video, but we haven't quite figured out how to get my computer to talk to your computer. But I've got a, a small PowerPoint. I promise I won't take too much time. I have been working with Mr. Gilliard and his team for at least a couple of years. The objective here is I want to tell you a little bit about REI, our operational experience, what Mr. Gilliard and his team and I have determined would suit your needs and achieve the goals that you're looking for with cameras. And then I'm going to open it up for Q and A, because there's always questions in regards to cameras. REI itself is a third generation family-owned business. We've been in business since 1938. We were the first company to get into mobile surveillance back in 1985. Any of you that have been in school long enough, you remember the big BCR systems that used to shoehorn in basically like old mailboxes. 2002 came out with our first digital. We're now on our fifth, actually sixth generation digital recorder. We have gone wireless, it is an option. The thing I like about our system in particular, it is completely scalable. So, right now, you know, I mean, there's bucket list and there's budget list. And the two have to meet somewhere in the middle. So, the first step is to upgrade surveillance equipment to something that suits your needs. A year or two down the road, if you wanted to go Wi-Fi or cellular, absolutely, you don't have to replace the entire system. It's completely scalable. It can upgrade itself. We don't have to add a box. We don't have to replace the box. The biggest thing that I do that sets us apart from most of our competitors, though, is we are an ISO certified manufacturer. What that means is, is we're not a reseller. I am not buying a box from overseas, putting my name on it, and then reselling it. We actually manufacture the product. Do we make every part? No. No manufacturer does. But if we do outsource it, it is built to our spec and our design. Literally, a lot of competition out there. And again, there's about 10 companies that are selling cameras, are just rebranding boxes they bought from overseas. The difference here is, is with being family-owned and being in business for that length of time, is continuity. We've been working with transportation departments for over, you know, about 40 years now in regards to mobile surveillance. We work with, you know, folks like Mr. Gilliard and other directors to find out what your needs are. Big thing that sets us apart is also customer support. Selling a product initially, I mean, low cost is always best, but the thing is, is what kind of support do you get afterwards? We are the only one that has 24-hour a day, 365-day a year. I mean, Atlanta Public Schools uses our Stop Bar product. They actually, I didn't realize this, but they run a 24-hour shop. They call them like 2:00 in the morning. One of our engineers answered the phone. Our tech support's not some call center where a kid is just doing an answer tree. You're actually talking to a tech or an engineer that helped design and build this product. The difference is, you don't have to wait until 9:00 AM to call. We're always reinvesting in R and D. As Mr. Gilliard mentioned, old cameras used to be front to back. Seat backs have gotten higher and higher because you're trying to compartmentalize the child for safety purposes. Difference is, the cameras north, bus driver couldn't see what's happening. So, what we created was a, we created a system. And this is what Mr. Gilliard, his team, and my team worked out that, that would work well for your schools. That is on a 72-passenger bus. Literally, with four cameras on the interior, you can see in between every seat. These cameras have 176-degree field of view. You will see the child directly below the camera. You will see all the way, if you notice, it goes all the way to the top of the window line on the other side. So, as you stagger, then put one over the driver, watches the doors. Obviously, that's a hotspot. You've got angry parents, unauthorized adults who's coming and going from the bus. You know, put one at row four on the passenger side, one at row eight on the driver's side again, and then one at row 10 on the passenger side again. With that cross-shooting, you will see in between all the seats. Our Zoom capability, older software, even ours, if you wanted to Zoom, you had Lasso, you had Cropit. It was just a lengthy process. And by the time you zoomed in, it was so pixelated, you couldn't tell what it was anymore. This is true 1080 technology. We now have the capability where, and, and Mr. Gilliard has seen it, I've done presentations, where you literally can zoom in while the video's playing on a child's cell phone to see what they're looking at on the phone, if you want to get into that kind of detail. I don't know, does your school, do you show parents the video?
I think we've refrained from that in most cases unless there's a, a good reason why we might would do that. But we, we have not been in the business of sharing those videos because of confidentiality. But from what I understand, with your software, you can blur out the face of the other students?
That is correct. FERPA is a big, to me, FERPA is like the HIPAA of schools. Video is considered part of the student file department. So, student privacy rules, you can't show them if there's other children on it. Other systems have the capability of blurring. I'm not saying we're the only one. But the other systems, you have to literally draw boxes around every individual face. And I mean, it's just time consuming. Our engineers came up with the thought, why not just draw a box around who you want to show? So, we draw, literally with two clicks of a button, you can blur out the rest of the bus and simply show just a single child that you're actually interested in seeing. We have a snapshot option. We can actually take a picture of that child with it all being blurred out. Where you legally could email the parent this picture. Here's your child, this is for in-school property. You know, it's just, what's taking hours of your staff's time with the he's said, she's said, and the meetings in the back and the forth to be solved within minutes? The windshield camera, I find it very, very important. Unfortunately, for some reason, it's always the school bus driver's fault. With the front windshield, it protects the driver, protects the school. With that, we also have a passive GPS system and a sensor harness that will track, was the right blinker activated, left blinker, red warning light, yellow warning light, stop bar deployed. You'll always be able to see all the metrics on the bus as it occurs. So, that way, you know, if an incident does occur, it's beyond a shadow of doubt what happened. Not only do you have video, but you also have the video metrics. You also have the GPS location of where it occurred. A nice thing that helps is, right now, if there's an incident, the bus driver or the teacher, it happened around 8:30. A major staff is taking from 8:00 to 9:00, watching a horror video, trying to find this one critical moment. With that map, they literally can click on the map, and it will take all the video metrics to that exact moment. Another innovation, accidents. I know nobody hopes to happen, but they do happen. Right now, the process is, is the police, you know, shows up, staff shows up, you make sure the children are okay. But the next thing you do is you grab a hard drive, and you all troop back to the transportation department to watch the video, who's at fault. Innovation we came up with is simple little device that we call a dongle. It creates a Wi-Fi environment. You plug this directly into the DVR. With a passcode and a free app you can download, the police and the staff can tune in, tap in, watch the video right on the spot, determine what happened. The police can take corrective actions right then and there. And if a clip needs to be made, there's an SD card slot where you can make minute or two clip right then and there. Again, it's just efficiency. Any questions at this point, as far as the product itself? I know I'm throwing a lot at you in a very short period of time. No? Okay. As far as references, I think that we are international. We actually have a plant in Brazil. Our primary plant is three and a half acres in Omaha, Nebraska. We provide services for school bus, motor coach, transit, agriculture, and shipping. In the state of Georgia itself, everything from Bannon County, up from Blue Ridge, to Columbus in Muskogee County, to Chatham, you know, Savannah, to your direct neighbors, which would be Bacon, Jeff Davis, Ware County, Adkisson County, Irwin County. We have partnered up successfully with all of them. Again, if you do have any questions, I gave Mr. Gilliard all my contact info. Please feel free to call the president if you'd like.
What kind of, I mean, what kind of warranties on this system?
It's a good question. Three years from now.
Well, that's the biggest problem we have, is, I mean, I, I believe we need these cameras in these buses. Everything you've said sounds great, I like them, but, you know, if they don't work, it doesn't, doesn't any good. We got cameras on our buses now, and they don't work. And that's, that's my biggest question is, you know, five years from now, we got 10 buses that are still working in, or all the buses are still working. That's the big difference. And that, that's kind of, you know...
No, I get it. And with electronics, that's a tough one to answer. Because I've had systems that have had problems after one year. Again, they're under warranty, no problem. Our warranty, by the way, I did not mention this, is if anything is broken, you call the tech support, they'll walk you through the process, make sure it's not software or firmware. If it is hardware, we will airdrop ship within 48 hours a replacement part. At that point, you take the faulty part, put it inside, inside is the return shipment label, and you ship it back to us on our dime after the warranty expires, which is what you were implying on that. Say year five, a system goes broke. At that point, still, you call our tech support. We will walk you through it to see if it is actual hardware. If it is, you will say, say it's hardware. You send it in. We will tear into it. We will actually call the transportation department and say, it's going to cost this much to fix it. Do you want us to fix it? Do you want to replace it? As far as durability, please call any of the counties that are using my product. But I literally just replaced 15-year-old systems in Chatham County of mine that were still functional. It's just they were technologically out of date. So, I've got some that, I mean, I can't guarantee it's going to last long.
I understand that, I'm just...
But the service behind it. And here's the main difference with us being a manufacturer. All my competitors are dependent on a plant overseas. If you upgrade their systems, you have to strip the entire system out and put in a new system because all the connectors are different, because they're not controlled production. Coweta County, for instance, has been with us for over 15 years. When they want to upgrade a system, and I highly recommend you upgrade a system every five to seven years just because of the technology curve. But when they want to upgrade a system, they just buy the DVR and the hard drive because all the camera plugins, the power cable, all the plugins are the same, have been since 2001. So, literally, it's what's called backwards compatibility. Saves a ton of time and saves a ton of money. How long will it last? I can't give you a guarantee on that. But my failure rate on my hard drives is less than 1% per hundred. Any other questions in the emergency?
We appreciate you coming and explaining the system and Mr. Gilliard having the system explained to the board. We did put this out for proposals, and we have, or we looked at the state contract. Yes, so, we're using the state contract for this particular product. And as you can see on the agenda, REI does have the most competitive price, which is good, too, so.
Honestly, it's unusual, because normally, we're, I always say, we're not the cheapest, but we provide the best value.
So, I'm asking the board not to approve tonight. We just wanted to present tonight, but then come back at the regular meeting next month and approve on the consent agenda, the purchase of the product.
Again, in the meanwhile, if anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. But I will attest, Mr. Gilliard has been very diligent in his due diligence, so. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Also, on the agenda tonight, we have vehicle purchase. In looking at our needs for vehicles, we, we have two trucks, the maintenance department director truck and the transportation director truck. They were both purchased in 2011. And those vehicles have lots of miles on, and we're recommending that they be, those trucks be moved to the fleet, the service fleet for the transportation department. We consume existing truck and use it. And then the maintenance department will use the existing truck in their, in their department and replace those with new trucks. So, we're asking for the purchase of two new trucks. And then also, we have identified a need for an automobile. We have a, a number of staff members that have to travel throughout the day and do home visits, specifically social workers and case managers who do home visits. And from time to time, we have other staff that needs to go to Waycrawls or other locations for training. An automobile, we feel like will eventually save the system money in the fact that we won't be paying travel to these employees, and they can use this car rather than, than use their vehicle and have to, us have to pay the travel, so. And there's an insurance question with some of our employees. We do have to travel throughout the day. There was some concern about liability and insurance. They can check this vehicle out and drive this vehicle during the workday for home visits and business such as that for the school system. So, we're asking the board to approve the purchase of our vehicle.
Don't be mandatory that they use this vehicle?
Well, it won't be mandatory, because we've got a lot of employees that have to do a lot of travel.
What we gain in some of the private district, we still got other folks driving their own.
Well, there's some people who, we've had some employees expressing concern that they don't like having the liability on them traveling through the day. And that they, they requested, is there any way the district could provide a resource for their travel? And...
I, I, I don't mind doing this, but they need to use it.
Yeah.
I have the same question.
Yeah.
I don't want to just sit in here and then they still...
That's right.
The other question is, do we don't have insurance to cover them? In their own vehicle when they're on school time? Do we just have insurance?
Their insurance, their primary insurance would be their insurance.
Yeah, but don't we have some that would cover them?
No, sir.
I thought we used to have that, some kind of coverage for liability when they were all doing their job for the school.
We currently don't.
See, you...
They, they, when they're driving their vehicle, their carrier is primarily liable. GSBA will be there in the background, but that gets to be a nightmare. GSBA or any insurance company hates to have to get in there and have a fight between insurance companies. But our, they wouldn't be, and we used to, Jesse, Mr. Galloway was talking about, we used to give them to sign kind of waivers and releases and all that. But it's, if, our, our GSBA, our insurance company does not like our employees to use their cars strongly. Right, Tracy?
Well, they've been not liking it a long time, mate.
Well, I mean, they would rather be on the hook, yeah. You're right.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, we don't want to just sit and use it. That's right.
And to control the expense, not have mileage, they're going to have to use it, so make it offset.
Well, and, and, you know, we were talking about, so today, talking about the group that he thought would use it. But I, I mean, I think there's a lot of people who use this thing. I mean, we've got somebody every day going to meet here from somewhere, you know, that, that, hey, you know, we've got school vehicle, you can do it.
They really like making more awareness, regular owners.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think it's limited to that group. I think there's a lot of different people that could make use of this. A quick question we got down here, a Chevrolet and a Ford in a box that says two Fords. Two trucks. So, it's a Chevrolet and a Ford that just in a little box up there.
It's, uh, it's the, it's the Ford. We're purchasing the Ford, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
The Ford F-150?
Yeah, we're purchasing two of those.
Two.
So, that was, that was just, okay.
Yeah, those are just prices in the box.
I guess, I guess.
The one Ford Fusion and the two F-150s.
I was thinking that's what we were purchasing, okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, first time I saw that, I thought the same thing. All right. All right. And, and once again, that's, we're putting that on the November 21 regular meeting. So, that's, that's, we'll see it until next month. All right. The 2019 College and Career Ready Performance Index. We have Dr. Joy Perrin here tonight to talk about CCRPI. we have Dr. Joy Perrin here tonight to talk about CCRPI. Before we get started with that, I do want to say that the CCRPI is embargoed, meaning that the State Department does not want it released until tomorrow at ten a.m. But I thought with the board meeting tonight, I couldn't wait to at least give the board a preview without us going public with it, the CCRPI results. So this video won't be played until tomorrow after ten a.m., of course, and so our visitors here tonight, there's very few, this data that we're going to discuss is embargoed until Friday at ten a.m., all right?
Go ahead, Clay, yeah.
Right.
All right.
And I think that's why I put ten twenty-five on that PowerPoint, because I was making sure that we get the same. What we wanted to do tonight was give you a preview, we're very excited about what you're going to see, and I want to give you a quick overview, I think all of you know what CCRPI is all about. But you know, it's the Georgia statewide accountability system that provides information on how well our schools are performing. It's under the ESSA that it's law. Last year, it was redesigned to make it a little somewhat more friendly to schools. So you can compare twenty eighteen score to twenty nineteen score, you know, over the past few years, you haven't been able to really compare those scores, but you can now. CCRPI is not the only measure that we look at, especially in our system, and all of you were a part of creating our strategic plan, and that plan also included performance measures for each of the focus areas, and that's what you've got on the screen. So we have measures beyond just academics. CCRPI measures beyond academics, but a lot of it's heavy in the academics. When it is released tomorrow, that's the website that you can go to and see the scores, if you really want to dig down deeper into them. So, the CCRPI components, like I said, they did redesign it, you know, it used to have about twenty to thirty components, and now it has eleven to fifteen components. And those components are content mastery, progress, closing gaps, readiness, and for our two high schools, graduation rate. And if you look at those weights, that's how much each thing counts under the elementary, middle, or high. So, here are our scores. Overall, we had a score of seventy-seven, up from sixty-nine point four, which is a seven point six change. That's a great increase. And if you look right under that, the state dropped, they had a seventy-five point nine score, down from seventy-six point six. When they break down the CCRPI, they give us all the elementaries kind of grouped together. Of course, every school gets their own score, but the district itself gets an elementary score, gets a middle score, and gets a high school score, in all of those component areas. So you kind of see that, and I want to kind of get a little bit deeper into that, but that's kind of gives you an overview. But of those seventeen components that are up there, we improved in fifteen and only dropped point five in one element and three points in another. So our schools, our teachers, our students are doing what we asked them to do, they're making a difference. And when we think about the components of the CCRPI, and we think about our strategic plan, we embed those in all the performance measures that we track, and for CCRPI, it's real heavy in focus area one, which is teaching and learning. And now you can't read that screen, so I blew it up for you, but you can see where I've got highlighted in green, that means we exceeded what we should have. Yellow means that we didn't exceed, but on all of those, we did except one, and we held steady at eighty-three. And then this is just another part of that same shot, and all of those we were green except one. And we actually did raise the score there, but we didn't quite meet the target, and I'm going to talk about how, where the targets come from in just a second. So, how do our elementary schools do? Coffey County's in the pink, so I'll just let you kind of look across there compared to the state elementary score. All of our elementary schools except two exceeded the state elementary score, and those two have kind of held steady right where they were. Tremendous gains. If you'll take a look at Nichols and Satilla, tremendous gains. We're real pleased across the board with, so those are elementary scores. Secondary scores, which is middle school, you know, middle school's its own score, and then you have high school, and those are the scores.
And I want to go back to elementary, and I really want to praise our elementary teachers and principals and everybody. We didn't have a single elementary school go back and have a significant low score, if you will. They all held their own or else they showed tremendous improvement. So it was really a testament to all of our elementary school teachers and our principals and all the support staff at the elementary schools. I mean, to be above the state average in elementary and see the gains that we had and then the ones that held steady, the whole steady, it's, I don't know if you remember from Pat's report, but we always had one or two who kind of were down there low and kind of kept the system from moving up real high, but this year, we didn't do that. The ones held steady and then the ones made big gains and will move up past the state average. So all of our elementary schools need to be commended and really praised for the work they did on this. It was tremendous, tremendous.
And I don't know if I pointed this out, but not only did we exceed the state score overall, we exceeded at elementary, we exceeded at middle, and we exceeded at high and graduation rate. So secondary, again, looking the pink, and this kind of distorts a little bit, this was just the graph, I mean, it looks a lot bigger than it is, but still, we had some great gains when you look compared to the state. The components, like I said, there are five components total. For elementary and middle and freshman campus, there's only four components, but for the high school, you add graduation rate, which makes it five. So where do the numbers come from? For content mastery, they look at all the things that we test on the, in the grade and in the course tests, English, math, science, and social studies. For progress, they look at, how did those students do compared to similar, similarly academic students like them in English and math, and how did our EL students do? For closing the gaps, and I'm going to show you this in just a minute, they give us flags and they show us in like ELA, special ed, how did they do? Did we meet the target there? Any of the subgroups that we have, so are we closing those gaps? And that's probably where we grew the most in closing the gaps. For middle school, gap closing, the change was thirty-six percent up. High school was twenty-five point eight percent up, which is amazing, and ten percent up in elementary. So readiness, where does readiness come from? In elementary, it's literacy, which is lexiles, student attendance, and beyond the core. Beyond the core is like art classes, and now we have art classes in all our elementary schools. Same thing in middle school, lexiles, literacy, student attendance, and beyond the core. In high school, in high school, it gets a little bit deeper, not only are those included, but also the dual enrollment, the pathway completion, the college and career readiness has a lot to do with that. And then graduation rate. Graduation rate is a combination of the four-year and the five-year. So content mastery, I told you, was all those scores. So if the student scored at beginning level, and the levels are beginning, developing, proficient, and distinguished, you don't get any points. If you get them to developing, they get a half a point. If you get them to proficient, that's a point. And distinguished is a one point five, which is a point and a half. So that's how they calculate those scores in those content areas. Progress, they have to make a certain percent of growth, actually it's percentiles, and you see right there how they get the value point for that. This is where the flags come in for those closing the gaps. If you get a red flag, you don't get any points. If you get a yellow flag, means you made progress, but you didn't meet your target, you get a half a point, and if you meet your target, you get that one point. And then for those subgroups that are really hard for us to move up, you get like economically disadvantaged EL or students with disabilities, you get one and a half points for, when you raise that. So that's where I think a lot of our gains came in. Okay? And readiness, it's those activities, like I said, dual enrollment, you know, where they participate in to get them ready for college, career, and life. And graduation rate, we talked about that. So how did our elementary schools do in those content areas? Again, we're the pink. In nineteen, eighteen is the turquoise color. So we raised it in three areas and held steady in progress. That's the elementary, all the elementary schools combined. Middle, pretty much the same thing, we raised in three areas and held steady pretty much in readiness. High school, we had gains in content mastery, closing gaps, slightly in readiness and graduation rate, and definitely in closing gaps, and then dropped just a little bit in progress. So if you want to look what those scores look like, and those arrows show you the subject areas and how we did, did we go up or did we go down? And I won't go through each one of those, but you can kind of look through to see the gains that we made. Elementary, ELA, math, science, and social studies, middle, the same, and then again, See all the green arrows? And then progress. I told you that progress was, you know, the growth for ELA in mathematics and those ELAs, I mean, EL students.
Yeah, our high school, they had all green arrows on there.
All right, here's a better view of the improvement targets, and where do those targets come from? In two thousand and seventeen, the state looked at each individual school and set targets, and you had to make three percent improvement to get a green flag. And they'll be reset in five years, which is about two thousand and twenty-two. But you don't, you don't have to increase every year, you kind of have to continue to meet that target. And again, those three at the bottom, economically disadvantaged, English learners, and students with disabilities, that star on that flag means that you get the, you raised them six percent and you get more points for that.
And we were really proud of this high school slide and the work they'd done because it's only been a few years back that you would have seen, as Joy pointed out to me, I think it's fair to say we would have seen a good bit more red on that slide than we currently see. So that's, that's really tremendous for our high school folks.
And here are the scores for readiness, and I told you it was literacy, which is lexiles, student attendance, and beyond the core. And even though middle school dropped, it was only by point five. And that just describes, like I said, that literacy is the lexiles, and student attendance, less than ten percent of enrolled days, and then the beyond the core, which I told you was fine arts, or the accelerated pathways, and the college and career readiness. And I think you hit on this last time y'all met about the graduation rate, but I just wanted to highlight it again, it's amazing, you know, everything, all of our scores have gone up and definitely graduation rate, and I think that's going to continue to increase because of all the options we have for our students in our district. There's just that chart that, over the last couple of years, if you'll note, that two thousand and thirteen was when we started with our first strategic plan, and the gains that we've made over the years. Very steady, very positive. Again, graduation rate from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. And I just listed some of the things that we feel like have helped us grow with graduation rate. Another area that we've got a score on is called school climate, and we're really proud of our schools because ten of our school, all of our schools except three got five stars, which is the highest you can get, and the other three got fours. So above average and excellent. What goes in there? Those surveys that we ask our, the public to take, parent surveys, student surveys, teacher surveys, discipline is added in there, and attendance, and the safety of the learning We believe, and research shows, that there are five characteristics that are common to effective school systems. Strong leadership, especially instructional leadership, high expectations, an instructional focus that everybody understands, a safe and orderly climate, and frequent measures of student achievement. So what are the priorities in our system? They're in our strategic plan, they're in our core focus areas, we continue to keep everybody on target with that. And as I went through this and as I developed this PowerPoint, I thought about what makes this a successful district or school? And I believe that raising student achievement, which we've done, all students making progress, which we've done, closing the gap, which we've really done, we've done a really good job with that, college and career readiness, meeting our mission and vision of destination graduation for everyone, a positive school climate, one of the highest scores that ever on an advanced ed Saks review. So I just want to thank all of our teachers, all of our staff, everybody that's worked hard with this plan over the last couple of years to help us increase this. And Dr. Banks, we've done all we can do for our children. Got any questions?
Thank you.
I have questions, but that's a lot of successes. Oh, yeah. Oh, and Dr. Lee's asked me to add a slide, so I had to print it. And that just shows you that in all those areas, we succeeded. We succeeded overall in our CCRPI score, we exceeded in our elementary, in our middle, in our high, and with our four-year and five-year graduation rates.
Thank you, Joy. And that's a testament to the work that everybody's done, our teachers, our parent professionals, our bus drivers, our secretaries, everybody at school level, everybody at the district level, Dr. Perrin yourself, you've been so strategic in your thinking and your planning and us implementing these plans for improvement. And to me, when we became a charter system, what, seven years ago now, one of the initiatives that we had to sign on to was that we were going to achieve above the state average in every area. That was what we had to sign the contract on, that we were going to exceed the state average in every area, and I'll be quite honest, at that point, we weren't. And I was a little nervous, but we all knew we could do it, and I think this, what this piece of paper shows is that we've done that. We've exceeded the state average in all the areas that we were supposed to, so.
And speaking of being a charter system, you know, annually, we train our school governance councils, and that's coming up on November the fifth at Coffey Middle School at five o'clock, and we invite you to be there. They always do a great job with that, and Jessica Baker's going to do a presentation, a quick presentation on the academy, she's doing a great job there, you know, we hope to see you there.
That's right. Thank you, Joy.
Thank you.
And we're going to continue working to get better, so that's, that's the key. That's our chat. All right, any questions, board members, about the CCRPI? And that is embargoed, so.
Yeah.
We will officially release that tomorrow.
You hear it from me.
The charter system school governance training, we have the training on, and Joy just mentioned this, Tuesday, November fifth, at five p.m. at the middle school. We wanted to put this in the agenda, just to make sure, we made sure everybody knew about that training. You'll get three hours of training, board, you require board training. Out of. Out-of-state travel, we have a couple of out-of-state travel requests, several. We have the grade six through eight at the middle school going to Orlando for the spring band trip. We have a group from Brockston kindergarten going to Jacksonville to learn about animals and habitats. And then we have a group from Nichols, fourth grade science, requesting to go to Jacksonville to learn about animals and habitats. If there's no concerns, we'll place that on the consent agenda. And then the last item on our agenda for tonight, as far as business is concerned, is a wellness policy. Of course, Ms. Dawn Lewis is our nutrition director. She couldn't be here with us tonight. They had state training and conferences she had to attend. So, she is getting ready for our review, our five-year review that we'll be going through next month. In preparation for the five-year review, she identified a policy that needed to be upgraded and added to, amended. So, she has included what needs to be in that policy for this month for the board to put on the table for review. And then we will come back and ask the board to adopt the policy next month. It's really, it's things that we're already doing, but it needs to be in this policy. So, it's a compliance issue. If there's no questions about that, then we'll place that on the consent agenda to, for public review until next month's meeting. Are there any questions, board members? And if there's no questions, then, do we have any audience participation? All right. Then I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel. And that's all I have, yes, ma'am?
Board, we have motion to exit to executive session.
Probably we take it to executive session.
General, thank you. All right.